I want to thank everyone for coming to the Child Welfare Town Hall tonight. We want to talk about the children coming into out-of-home care here in Manatee County, and what services we need here for the children and families. And before we get started, I want to thank Drina and Patrick for letting us use the Dream Center. This is a great turnout, and we really appreciate it. And we want to say a welcome to Gary from Congressman Buchanan's office. Thank you for coming. And Alan Donahue and his staff, thank you so much from Manatee County Government for putting this all together for us. We really appreciate it. My name is Kim Kutch. I'm with the Department of Children and Families. I'm the Community Development Administrator for Circuit 12, which is Manatee, Sarasota, and DeSoto Counties. And what we're going to do tonight is we're going to discuss what is going on with the children in out-of-home care with the Sarasota YMCA Safe Children's Coalition and the Manatee County Sheriff's Office. But what I want to let you know first is how we're set up here in Circuit 12. The Department of Children and Families is the contractor for services. So we contract with the Sarasota YMCA for child welfare case management services. And then their case management organizations are Pathway Human Services for DeSoto and Sarasota Counties. We have a slide up here for anyone that would like to see that in reading. We have Youth and Family Alternatives for Sarasota and Manatee Counties, and Centerstone for Manatee County. And then for child protective investigations in Sarasota and DeSoto Counties, the Department of Children and Families handles that. And in Manatee County, it's the Manatee County Sheriff's Office. And then for child welfare legal services, it is done through Department of Children and Families for all three counties also. So what we're going to do tonight is we're going to start off talking about investigations. And Connie Keener from the Sheriff's Office is going to get us started with that.
All right, thank you. First of all, my boss asked me to come and be a support. I didn't know I was a presenter, but we'll get through this, okay? So I've been at the Sheriff's Office for 15 years, and I think it's an absolutely fabulous place to work. The people that I work with are absolutely dedicated to keeping kids safe. We care about kids. We're concerned about kids, and we give wholeheartedly to every one of our investigations. As you'll see, they'll be running some slides and stuff up here, and I'll try and stay out of your way. But as they're running the slides and stuff up there, I'm not going to spend a lot of time reading all of those to you, because I think that's boring. But I am going to tell you that as of the middle of August, just this year, from January to the middle of August, in Manatee County, the Sheriff's Office has already sheltered 291 children. That's a lot of kids. Sometimes, I'm a trainer, and I teach all the new staff, and sometimes I tell them, "I think we've taken every kid in Manatee County. I don't think there's any kids left." Because we have been on a run for a good year and a half now of having these horrific cases where kids just cannot, in any good conscience, be left where they're at. I'm not saying that we have bad parents. I'm saying that we have parents that have struggles. They have demons. They have trauma that they have not addressed that has resulted in them making some very, very bad choices, and their kids are paying the consequences for those. And so as you read, as you look through the slides and stuff that they'll be showing, the number one and two reason that we shelter kids in Manatee County have to do with drugs and family violence. Drugs and family violence. This is dangerous stuff. You know, for law enforcement, they always say that the most dangerous case to go out on are the family violence cases. And here we have kids right in the middle of all this violence going on in their homes. Kids are being hurt as a result of that. The drug use, people don't know what's going on. There's a horrific death rampage that's going on in our community, and kids are walking and seeing mommy and daddy, one or the other or both, passed out with needles in their arms and spoons and stuff hanging right there next to them. Wow. How does a kid deal with all of that? And so what I think one of our great services is, is that we need some trauma folks to come into our community. This is ad lib, okay? Like, they didn't know what they did, and they asked me to come up here. But I think that we need trauma folks coming in. When you go out and really talk to people, I mean, think about the people that you know or people that are around you, and you go out and you talk to them, and you hear their story, you hear their testimony, you hear about their lives. Do you know what I'm talking about? Is anybody with me? Like, you all listening, okay? And you talk to those people, and you hear about what their struggles are that they've gone through in their life, and don't you just say, "Wow? Like, how did you get here?" And usually, it's because somebody stepped in and cared about them, came alongside of them, gave them hope, and worked with them to know that there's a way, that they can survive and do better. Folks, with all these families, we have, last year, we had close to 5,000 investigations in Manatee County, not the state of Florida, in Manatee County. I generally speaking, most of the time, have about 25 investigators doing the work. Now, we're staffed for more, but this is a tough job. We don't exactly have a whole lot of people lining up to do it, although, do you guys know who Captain David Brown is? Anybody know who Captain David Brown is? The Dallas Police Department Captain. And I'm very impressed with this man. And what he did was he gave a challenge to the community to come join his police force. Come join his officers in the fight. And that's the challenge that I told my boss I was going to give you guys tonight, is to come join us in child welfare. As the Manatee County Sheriff's Child Protection, it is our job, we're tasked with, we're contracted to ensure the safety of the children in the community. Come on, let's be real, 25, 30, 50 employees can't keep all the kids in this community safe. We cannot do it by ourselves. We need you to come work with us, to help us. We need you, if you will, to police your communities. Love the kids in the neighborhoods where you live. Get to know the children in the neighborhoods where you're at. Recognize who they are. And hey, tell me about your family. You like to play basketball? Want to toss the football? Come over here, and let's plant some flowers, let's post some weed, whatever it is. But get to know the kids and care about them and love them. And you know what? You could be that person that makes the difference in that kid that might be experiencing trauma. But you know what's more important to us? Is you know what's going on in their lives. And when you know what's going on in their lives, then you could all, you call 1-800-96-ABUSE. I didn't complain about the number of investigations we had. You keep them coming, because the only way we're going to know kids are safe is because somebody tells us about it. If it's some big secret, and these kids don't have anybody to talk to, then how will we ever know? The other challenge that we have is that sometimes people say things to kids, which is very different than I heard when I was growing up. When I was growing up, people said, "The policeman is your friend." Did that happen to anybody else? Did anybody else hear that when you were growing up? "The policeman are your friends. Go talk to the policeman." I love working for the police. The Sheriff's Office is wonderful. But what I want to hear people say is, "Go tell CPS." When the people come and ask you questions, let them help you. Let them be your friend. And what we're experiencing is, is people saying, "Don't talk to them. They're going to take you, and then you're never going to see us again." And that's just the way it is, so don't be talking to those people. Well, when you look at these stats, it looks like that's a true statement. So I wanted to dispel that and kind of clarify that a little bit tonight. Part of the issue is, it is a true statement that we have sheltered a lot of kids, but we sheltered them because they were in an unsafe situation. We didn't shelter them because they talked to us. We didn't shelter them because they told the truth. We sheltered them because the adults were not doing what they needed to do to provide a protective, nurturing, supportive environment for that child to grow up in. And so I want us, as a community, to wrap our arms around these kids, love on them, and tell them, "Talk to us." We've had some kids that won't talk to us because they don't feel safe. If I say something, then something bad's going to happen at home. But you know what? I can't make you safe if you don't talk to me. You kind of see how it's a double-edged sword? I believe with all my heart that if, as a community, we will get involved in the lives of the children, not the whole county, the kids in your community, the kids on your block, get involved with those kids, and tell them, "I'll go with you when you talk to this person. I want to support you as you go through this courageous thing that you're going to do." You know, that kind of stuff. I think we can make those kids safe too. So what I'm asking is, as a community, work with us to continue to keep kids safe. And I think that that is a huge part, and obviously, we've had some of that happening. That's why we have so many removals. The second piece that I think that we need are for the communities to love the adults. Ooh, that's tough. Do I have to? Well, I'm asking you to. Because those adults are the ones that have had trauma in their lives. That's maybe why they're using the drugs. That's maybe why they buy the lie that they deserve to be beat up. If only I had made that apple pie better. If only I had dusted better. If only, well, you never deserve to be hit in any way, shape, or form. But if I've had a lot of trauma, and I don't think I'm worth a lot anyway, then why don't I buy the lie? Unless someone comes alongside of me and says, "You know what? You're a person of worth, and you're a person of value, and I would like to help you." What can I do to help you? When was the last time these people were treated with kindness and respect? And so if I don't receive it, can I give it? I'm going to say it's real tough. And so if I can't give it, what are my kids learning? The cycle continues and continues and continues. And I think that it continues to create a great struggle for the children in our community. So I think, if we're going to turn it around, I have job security, unfortunately. We're going to have lots of kids that are unsafe, and we're going to have to step in and make them safe. Well, I think we can make Manatee County a terrific community to live in if we can start putting our arms around people that are struggling, giving them some hope and loving on them, helping to encourage them to connect with trauma services so that they can take care of their own issues, and then by taking care of yourself, you can take care of your children, make your kids safe. So I kind of liken it to, if you'll allow me, I'm sorry, I'm a trainer. I talk for 90 minutes, and then I take a breath. So make yourselves comfortable. Okay, so here's an analogy that I have for you, okay? Anybody in here been on an airplane? Yeah, okay. You know, when you get on the airplane, they kind of do this little steward thing, comes out, and then they say, "Put the mask on." Here's, you all know that routine, you know, "Put the mask on." I have this little kid with me. Would somebody please tell me why I don't put that mask on that little kid first? Why am I putting the mask on me first? I'd always like to give the answers to my questions. So obviously, the answer is, because if I don't take care of myself, I'm not going to be able alive to put the mask on the little kid, right? So doesn't it make sense that we need to address the parent, the adult issues first so that we can start to build healthy families, so that we can make our kids safer? Drugs, domestic violence, and coming in third in the statistics you'll see is inadequate supervision. And doesn't that make perfect sense? If I'm hurt from physical injuries from the domestic violence, I can't be there to take care of my child's needs. If I run because I don't want to be hurt, and I run out the door, who did I just leave behind in the house? My kids, right? So there could be lots of those types of things. We have the people that are hurting, and so the only way to fix the pain is to be oblivious, and I'm using the drugs. The problem is, they're making extremely incredibly lethal decisions with that as well. And again, I'm not the expert in that area. I have others that talk about that. But for me, I want to encourage you to help us by making a difference in the community that you live in, and to work with us when you see that there's a problem. Sometimes people get really angry and frustrated with this, "Well, we call you, but you don't do anything." And so this is another point that I want to make. We can't do anything if we don't have enough evidence to support what people are saying is happening. But I saw it. I'm not discounting you, but I need more than just you. I'm not saying that you're lying, but you know, we have some people, not any of you here, but we have some people in our communities that aren't forthcoming, okay? Not any of you. So we can't just always say, "We're going to believe what you say, but not what you say." You know what I mean? Like, we've got to have some evidence, and in the absence of evidence, we cannot take action. And I know it's very frustrating, it's incredibly frustrating to us, but do you want to live in a country where the government can come in and take your kids without evidence? Say no. See, I like to give the answer, say no. You don't want to live in a country like that. You want the country to say, "You have to have a certain amount of evidence to support your decision that the kids are not safe, and therefore, they need to come out of the home." And so we need people to be involved to help us get that evidence to make the kids safe. So we shelter a lot of kids. When you look at the statistics, we are off the charts in Manatee County. I just want to ask, what's going on out here? What are we doing to love the people around us, to care about the people around us? I don't think it's always because they ran out of gas before they got to Sarasota. You know, I think that it's something else, you know? And so I think that we have a very unhealthy community, and I think it's up to people like yourselves who have chosen to come tonight, to obviously be involved because you're concerned or you're willing to listen, to try to make some differences in it. So anyway, that's about all that I can rattle on for right now, but I hope that that makes some sense to you. If you have questions, we're glad to talk to you at the end, okay?
Hi, my name's Greena Slater, and I'm the Vice President of the Sarasota YMCA Safe Children Coalition. I'm not a trainer like Connie, so I like data, and I wanted to start by showing some of the data at the beginning. And this is removals. So if you look at the chart up there in the brick, this is our county altogether, our circuit altogether. It's Sarasota, Manatee, and DeSoto Counties. As you can see, the higher numbers are our circuit. The rest is the state average, and then you can flip. And then DeSoto County, you can see, is off the charts as well. DeSoto County is much smaller, so the numbers, if you shelter an extra two or three kids, it makes a huge difference. So DeSoto's not quite as valid as Sarasota, which is Sarasota County. They're right along with the state average. And then the next one is Manatee County. As you can see, Manatee County, the last 18 months, and actually, it even started before then, it's been probably about 24 months, is anywhere from two, sometimes three times the state average for removals of children. We used to have anywhere 15, 20 kids. The Sheriff's Office would remove a month, and then about two years ago, it started hitting 30 kids a month, which, you know, we're on, we, the Safe Children Coalition, the Y, we're on the backside. So when they remove the children, we have placement, we find a foster home for them to go to, or if the Sheriff's Office has a relative, they try to place them with a relative. And then this last year, we've been averaging, from just Manatee County alone, between 50 to 60 kids a month. Last October, Manatee County by itself sheltered 74 children. And our entire circuit, last October, sheltered 109 children, which, just to kind of tell you how that equates, Miami-Dade sheltered 108. So we sheltered one more child than all of Manatee, I mean Miami. So those are some of the things that have been going on over the last 12 to 18 months, 24 months, but they're getting a lot worse. I know you went through, you want to flip through some. Connie went through a lot of the ZIP codes, if you want to see that one. The ZIP code that we're in right now is the highest bar graph that was up there. 80 children, just since January, have been removed from the ZIP code that we're sitting in right now. 80 children. You know, these are the kids in our community, and they're coming into care, they're being removed from their parents. Some of the reasons why, you went over the domestic violence is number one, substance abuse is number two, and then the inadequate supervision. Keep, you want to keep going? This, this graph, you can't really see, but this is heroin deaths and heroin. Manatee County is the highest county in the entire state of Florida for heroin overdoses. I don't know how many people knew that, that Manatee County's number one for heroin overdoses. The next one is fentanyl. Manatee County, again, number one in the entire state of Florida for fentanyl overdoses. I talked to, oh, there's the Narcan too. Narcan over, that's the number in the middle. The top one is how many doses. Last July, I think they gave 282 doses of Narcan, and Narcan is given when somebody overdoses on heroin. I just heard that this July, just last month, that they gave 400, 450 what? 456. So that means that EMS went out and gave 456 doses of Narcan to bring people back alive. These are kids that are being removed from their parents, and these are the children that are coming into our system of care. Last year, due to the removals, our community-based care agency, the Sarasota Y, and several others throughout the state, due to the removals, had to apply for risk pool funding. So we went through a process with the Department of Children and Families and with legislation to be able to bring, to be able to get more money into our areas so that we could afford the children that we were getting in due to the explosion of children that happened. So you can see, here's some of the averages for DeSoto, Sarasota, and Manatee. The numbers, DeSoto's state has gone up a little bit, Sarasota's gone up a little bit, but DeSoto, I mean, Manatee County over the last couple of years has gone up more than 100% in removal rates. We, as the Sarasota Y, last year had a $2 million deficit for placements, and it was all for residential care, because whenever you only have so many foster homes, and you've tripled or quadrupled your number of children that are actually coming into foster care, there's not foster homes that can support the children that are coming in. So we have to place them in, like, group care or residential places, or children's villages, or the Sheriff's Youth Ranch. We have several places within our area, or within Pinellas or Hillsborough, that we have to place a lot of our children, also due to the large sibling groups that have come into care. Manatee Sheriff's Office took several sibling groups of four last year, several of fives, I think four sixes, two eights, and one nine. Whenever you get that many children coming in from one family group, there's no foster homes that are large enough to take them. We have, you can only have two children under the, or three children, two children under the age of two in a home. So if you take twins, a set of twins we had last year, we almost had to separate two one-year-old twins because you, because the only foster home we had already had a child in it. We do things like, we're able to do waivers so we can keep them together, but we couldn't keep them with their other siblings, because there, you can't keep that many children in a foster home whenever you take a sibling group of five or six. Some of the other things from the, from the application that we did last year for the legislation was the, we had the highest removal in the state and the highest death rate, heroin, fentanyl. And then we've been working as a community with several different agencies. We work with Centerstone. We work with several Sarasota agencies as well as a community to try to come together and come up with different ideas for the circuit to help take care of the kids that are in our system of care. Do you want to keep flipping? So one of the things that tonight, we really wanted, we wanted this to be open and open forum, because this is for our community. This is the ZIP code that our children are being removed in. We wanted everyone's opinion, or people had questions. We don't, you know, we don't want to sit up here and preach to you and tell you what we need. I can tell you what we need, is we need homes for our kids. We are, we're getting kids whose parents are dead. We had four parents die last year, or last week, I'm sorry, last week. Four parents of kids of ours that died in one week. It's sad. It's scary. We used to maybe have two parents a year die. And, you know, it, now, whenever the phone rings, it's someone else has passed away. And it's all heroin overdose, or fentanyl overdose, or now we have car fentanyl. So we've had all of these things come into the county, and we're having children who don't have parents, or they, you know, they're removed from one parent, and then their other parent passes away. We had two sets last, three sets last year where both parents died within several months of each other. And, you know, we need our community to step up and come together and, you know, be foster parents and take care of these kids that are in our community. It's so important, because, you know, we can't place lots and lots of kids in one home. Our foster parents are taxed. They, you know, whenever you have three or four kids in your home, you have three or four case managers, you have three or four guardian at Lytoms, you have therapists, you have so many things, you know? And then the kids want to play football, and then soccer, and there's all these things. So, you know, our foster parents get, get really, really, I'm told to move, they get really, really tired. And, you know, we try not to give them too many kids. So that's what we wanted tonight to be about, really, with the community, and if the community has questions, or if they have questions about being a foster parent, whether adoptive parent, we're going to have somebody talk to you about being an adoptive parent, and also anything else, questions that you have about fostering or adopting within our circuit. Anything else? The what? Kristen? I don't know if she can hear. Oh. Who is it? All right, hi. This is Patricia Lawler. She's one of our foster parents. Hi. Hi. I thought Kristen was introducing you. Oh, just wait. She's going to talk to you tonight about being a foster parent.
And that one is one of mine. Hi. Let me tell you a little bit about myself. First of all, I'm a 71-year-old, single foster parent. And I assure you, I came into the fostering gig kicking and screaming. We had a representative from Florida Baptist Church come to our church and talk about foster parenting, and my roommate at the time bought right in. I, on the other hand, did not. I moved to Florida to retire, to lay on the beach and roast and toast, not take care of children. After much conversation, I relented and said, "Okay, I'll be your babysitter. I'll go to the MAP classes with you. They're your responsibility." On February 23rd, 2010, we received, she received, her first placement, two little boys. Nine months later, on November 6th, 2010, Kimmy passed away from brain cancer. And here I am with two little boys mourning the loss of Mama Kimmy, as was I. And it was very obvious to me at that moment that I could not disrupt these two little boys' lives any more than had already been disrupted. The biological parents, the case manager, Florida Baptist, the guardian at Lytum, FCC, all sat down and talked and granted me non-relative caregiver to the boys. On March 29th of 2011, the boys reunited with their biological parents. In that interim, I had said to my licensing agent, "Okay, okay, let me just get my license. I'm doing it. I might as well be certified." And I got my license. Now, the two boys that reunited are doing incredibly awesome. They are still with their biological parents. They live in Michigan, and I do stay in touch. On April 8th of 2011, I got my license. On April 9th, I received my very first placement, a three-month-old baby girl and a 27-month-old baby girl. And I had them for 45 months, pretty long time, actually. So you can relate to getting a little bit of attachment there. I worked with the biological parents, hoping to help them reunify with their children. Unfortunately, their goal was not the same as mine. The parents' rights were later terminated, and then I helped in the process of getting my two little girls adopted. On May 11th, 2015, those two little girls were adopted by a young family over in Cocoa Beach, which, by the way, I still go to see because I am grandma. The hair is a dead giveaway. And I see them probably three or four times a year. The girls are doing fabulous. Since last May, I have had many children come through my doors. All of a sudden, one night, I get a phone call from Florida Baptist and says, "Wow, I have a 16-year-old. Would you be interested? Would you be willing? You're the only person that has a front seat in their car available." "Okay," I said. "Now, I'm here to tell you. You want to talk about being scared to death?" "Oh, yeah, that was me. 16 years old. What was I thinking?" My biggest issue and/or problem with this young woman was, she had been in three shelters in less than a year, and I was getting ready to put her in her third high school that year. She informed me, she's not going to school. She informed me, she's not going to school. She's going to get her GED because school is teaching her absolutely nothing of life. Hmm, we sat and talked, laid down the law. The law is, if you're in my house, you go to school. GED is not an option. Okay? These are the rest of the rules. So here, shelter, which would you like? She chose to stay with me. And it was fine for a couple weeks. And then I hear her run into the bathroom. Yeah, okay. She comes up, I can't go to school, I'm so sick. I stand up, I felt her head and I said, no fever, you go to school. By the way, that's something my mother did to me. Learned it well. She turned, the door slammed, and the only thing I could think of was, oh my goodness, it's a good thing the house is made of cement blocks. So I started down the hall and I said, Lord, grant me wisdom because I'm going to kill And my prayer was granted. And I opened the door and I said, sweetheart, you know what? I'm going to let you stay home today. I realize you're really sick. But I want your cellphone and your laptop. And I got, you're kidding, right? No, 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 you're so sick. And, and your cellphone and your computer will just be a distraction. You really need to rest. You've never seen anybody put clothes on so fast and get in the car as she did that morning. Door on the car almost broke off when she got out and slammed it and all I could do was chuckle. She was fine for the next couple weeks. Things were going very well. I get a call from school. She tried to withdraw from school. Okay, time for tough love. Now she had gotten very used to having her own bedroom and privacy, little bit of freedom, nobody stealing her clothes and her stuff. So she came home and I said, we need to talk. This is the deal. You tried to quit school today. And I told you that is not an option. So, in essence, you're telling me that you're giving up on yourself. And if you're going to give up on yourself, I therefore am going to give up on you. So, again, your choice. Go to school or go back to the shelter because I will call the Safe Children Coalition. And she looked at me and she said, you would do that to me? Oh, absolutely, not a doubt in your mind. I will tell you, her third quarter marks, she made the honor roll. I will also tell you, at the end of her sophomore year, she did in fact get all passing marks and was promoted to be a junior. On August 5th, she reunified with her grandmother in Bradenton and is now attending Manatee High School as a junior. This young lady has the most tender, loving, caring, thoughtful heart I have ever met. She can do anything she wants to do. She just has to do it. What I would like to say to you is, if you're at all saying to yourself, I can't become a foster parent, I'll get too attached, well, my answer to you is, that's the reason you should become a foster parent. Because your heart is telling you that you have the ability to love. And guess what our kids need? They need love, which they didn't get. They need patience and understanding that they didn't get. They need consistency, probably, which they didn't get. I will also tell you, don't be afraid of the age number. It can be scary. I'll attest to it. But just know, with love and patience, you can conquer anything over them. And I found out that the mere fact that I decided to use tough love on her is the reason she is today still in school. So for that, and I tell you, I was nervous doing the tough love thing, but it worked. And that is my story and I thank you very much for listening to me. And if you're at all thinking about foster parenting, and even if you aren't, if you're coming into it kicking and screaming, I will tell you right now, I cannot imagine my life doing anything else other than what I am doing right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lawler. In a little bit, we're going to have two folks come up and talk about adoption and foster care further. But before we do that, we want to hear from you. You've heard about what's going on in the child welfare system here in Manatee County. You've heard about the investigations and the child removals. You've heard about some of the needs that the Safe Children's Coalition has. So we want to hear from you about what's going on, what you see the needs are, what you see going on in your community. And when you do that, Alita, where are you at? Alita has a microphone and so she's going to come over to you with the microphone. So please wait till she gets with you. And if you could tell us your name and if you're a community member or from an agency, please let us know. And also know that when you're talking to us and letting us know what's going on, we are listening, especially because our regional director is here, Lisa Mayrose, from the Department of Children and Families. So we are hearing what you're saying. So tell us, what do you think is going on? What do you think we need?
I think you need more foster care training and you need to be flexible about how it's administered. My husband and I have been willing to be foster parents and the training has not been that frequent and it, it's difficult to attend, certainly when you have other children at home.
Would you please state your name?
Sure. Sorry, I'm Kathy Peijer, I'm a guardian at lightum.
Thank you. Any more questions? Anybody else have anything?
My name is Rachel Morris and in January, I, my children, the twins and another little boy was brought into the system. And I don't feel like the system, I feel like the system failed the other little boy and shut the family out. And he has been flipped from one foster home to another. He's on six now. I think they take too long terminating parents' rights. And I have, I could go through a whole list of emails where I was ignored. He's been in just as many daycares. And I've had attorneys turn me down because they say that there's too many games being played on, in the courtroom with the attorneys, Children's Legal Services, Safe Children Coalition. And he is, his mother had been giving unsupervised visits for a couple weeks. I did attend one of those visits where he was left in a restaurant by himself. The following week, the foster family gave a 30-day notice for him to be moved to his seventh foster home. And that following Friday, the mother was given overnight. She has a lot of mental illness history, which they're aware of. And I just feel like the families of these children are suffering because we're watching him suffer. He's being medicated now because he's been in so many homes. And we're the ones who were there changing his diapers, waking up with him and everything. And I think you need to realize that you are taking children and keeping them in the system too long and they're suffering. My boys, the twins, were raised with them and they have cried for months. Where is he? Why is he not here? And I really think you need to look at the relatives. People make mistakes. My partner and I, we were together for 17 years. We had one incident in January in 17 years and that has been held against us and we have worked case plans.
Okay, thank you so much for sharing that. If you could, Kristin, where are you at? Kristin Candles, okay, Kristin Candles back there. If you could please go back and see Kristin and give her the name of the child that you're talking about so we can take a look at that. Thank you.
We had a question here.
Yes, my name's Ralph Burnett. And you had mentioned drug addiction as a, or drug use as a prime cause of a lot of these problems with kids being in the system. Do you know the percentage or number of kids that actually have drug problems that may have, you know, come as a result of being from homes that have drug problems?
The percentage of the kids? Okay, are you talking about the kids or are you talking about the parents? Because we're talking about the parents having the drug issues.
I'm speaking about the kids. I mean, how many kids do you get that have drug problems?
Okay, I don't have those numbers right now, but we can get that, we can get that information to you.
Okay.
Okay? If you, at the end of the meeting, if you come up and see me and give me your email address, we'll take a look at that so we can get you that information.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, does someone else have?
Yeah, I saw here.
I have a hard, a difficult time when a child is placed with foster care and then the mother has another child, but that child's left in that home. If she's not suitable for the first one, how can she be suitable for the second? And invariably, that second, third, fourth child is removed over a period of time. It doesn't make sense. If you're not, if you're not a suitable parent for one, you're not a suitable parent for the rest, generally.
Would you tell us your name?
Karen Darby.
Okay. Okay, so this, you know, if it's frustrating for you, it's frustrating for us sometimes too. But the reality is, is that as human beings that live in the United States of America, we have rights. And we have to have something that's called a nexus, that what I did when she was sheltered from me, that I have that same issue right now. There has to be a specific issue that we have the evidence to support it, to say that I still have it, for her to be taken from me as well. Sometimes that's true. Maybe she was, maybe, I don't, I can't talk about case specifics, but maybe she was sheltered because my husband and I got into big fights and we were always fighting and it was dangerous, the family violence, domestic violence situation. And that's why she was taken from me. But now I'm, you know, moved on and now I'm pregnant, now I've had another baby, and now I have some substance issues. I'm not with my husband anymore. We don't have the domestic violence thing going on anymore. Maybe I do have some substance things, maybe I use marijuana every now and then or something like that. But you can't come in and take this kid from me because I'm no longer in the domestic violence thing that was the reason why you took this kid from me. And I know that that doesn't necessarily make everybody happy, but I can't like change the laws. I'm just telling you, the reality of it is, is that as a parent, you have a right to be a parent. But you also have some responsibilities. And that's what we want parents to do and that's what we want the community, what I want the community to do, is to wrap your arms around those people and help them fulfill their parental responsibilities. Now, if I was in this domestic violence relationship with my husband and this child was sheltered from me, we continue to be in our domestic violence relationship and I had another baby and now this one's born and we're continuing to have reports, then there's a, what's called the nexus. And now, yeah, there might be some basis to take this child from me as well. Because I'm continuing to exhibit the same behaviors that caused the danger the first time. And again, you guys, we do not want to live in a country where the government can come in and just take our kids because they want to, because somebody has determined that I'm not okay. We want there to be the need for some evidence to support that the kids aren't okay with me. Because I don't go around and I don't teach my staff, go around and take that kid, oh cute kid, let's take that one. That's not why we take kids. But we could if we lived in a country that didn't require us to have some evidence. And so we cannot go down that path. We need to have a reason that supports why we would take this child and this child and this child and this child, because we took one. Don't you guys have hope that people can change? Are you the same person that you were 10 years ago? Come on, say it ain't so. Come on, anybody with me? Because if we don't have hope that people can change, what kind of people are we? So you have to have hope. And that's why we have to give that mom the chance, or dad, to say, I've done something different. We, the foster mom, whoever she was, her kid, you know, she's the one that just told you the family got reunified. Isn't that a wonderful thing? I just wanted to stand up and cheer. Because that's always our goal, you guys, to take the children, keep them safe, help people make changes in their lives so that the family can be put back together. Folks, I've had foster kids in my home and I kept doing it until the home and the car was too full. We couldn't take anymore. So then we stopped. But the reason why you, the reason why you want families to get their kids back, I truly believe and I teach it, that every kid wants to be with their biological family. Don't you want to be with your family? Every kid wants to be with their biological family. It's our responsibility as a community to help them reconnect with that family in a safe way. That's why we can't just arbitrarily, because we took one kid, take the next one, the next one, the next one. Can't do that. You have to have hope that I can make some changes. So I'll stop preaching now and give it back to Kim.
Alita, you have one over here.
Hi, my name's Debbie Nedvedomsky and a question regarding that is, when they remove the children from the home, what then do they do to the mom that's drug addicted, to the father that's drug addicted, to the abuse that's going on in the home? So that, her question about having more children, it just, and I'm sure it's a funding issue, but when they remove the children, you know, it's, what's happening to the parents? That's my question. What are, what are their obligations to go and get help and?
Well, what we do is we have a case plan. And the case plan is developed with the parents. And depending on what the situation is, that's, you know, what is put in their case plan for treatment, you know, it may be outpatient treatment, maybe inpatient treatment, it just depends on what is going on in that family and what we need to put in that family to make those children safe again so they can be reunified with their parents.
Do they have people that work with mom and dad? Individuals that physically go in there?
Yes. And that is through the Safe Children's Coalition. They have case management services. So they have a primary case manager through them to work with them and help them through this case plan that they have.
Hi, Devin Davis, mother, and I am running for Ward One City Council. I agree, this is a community, we have to work together because so many people don't even know this is going on because we live in our worlds and we don't pay attention. I've worked with alcoholics and drug addicts and I know it's a disease and they need help. And I agree with what she said, love the family, the parents also, because they need help. So I think it's more communication. I mean, I'm, I have not even been to any of these meetings and I'm just thrilled just to hear this.
I think I'm getting ready to share what you've been asking about. I mean, if I'm out of order, tell me I am.
I mean, if I'm out of order, tell me I am and I'll sit down. My name, I'm Floyd Price, and I'm a member of the Board of Directors of Guardian Angels of Southwest Florida, Inc. As some of you know, but a lot of you don't, our goal, we build foster family homes. That's our number one goal, that's what we do. We have a nine-acre campus, Manassasoda Campus, off of Ellison Galette Road, just across from southeastern Guide Dogs out there. We have that nine-acre campus, the county will allow us to build nine foster family homes. The foster family home concept is, it's not an institution, it's not a group home. Each of these homes, this is a faith-based ministry. We are in partnership, actually, with Florida Baptist Children's Home, which the lady was talking about that contacted her some time back. Each of these homes are six bedrooms, six and a half baths, they're beautiful homes. We have three homes that are now built and completed, and they're all full. As the Safe Children Coalition will tell you, the job that these folks have is nigh on to impossible. The job that you're trying to do, and you're obviously trying to do it very well, and you're doing the best you can, and they're doing the best, they remove them, they place them, we take them and do what we can. But there's so many, as they've made so clear, there's so much of a need for foster parents for foster homes. So we are asking for the support of the community. Guardian Angels, not a single penny, we have no paid employees, the Board of Directors are all volunteer. We've got some that are way too old to be there. Ed Dick, for instance, is on, one of the guys on our board, but he's salvaged by his wife. She's very sweet. Anyway, we've had the privilege of building, and we are, hopefully, hopefully by the end of this year, we will have started at least the fourth home. We don't start any of the homes until we have the money to finish them. And you can figure on around $350,000 at least per home, even with the cuts that we get from the people that build them for us and the general contractors and all. It's just very expensive to build. But we hope to have the final site plan approved for the whole nine acres by the county by the end of this year, and have at least number four started, if not number four and five. Our goal, main goal out there, is to take care of these larger sibling groups. So, as has been mentioned, one of the worst traumas to the kids after they're taken out of their home and they've already been through hell, is to then be split up from their siblings. And that happens all the time. Right now, in just one of our homes, I know they've got four sibling girls that they've had for over two years. And they just got two twin boys, 15 months old, to make the six in that home. So we provide the care, loving care, for these children, but we need the help of the community. We can only build the homes as the monies come in. As I said, we're in partnership with Florida Baptist Children's Home. I say in simple terms, we're the funding arm, they're the operational arm. We buy the land, we build the homes, we need it all to them, we don't own one thing. We don't have one, so you're not, you don't have to worry about us taking anything or getting one dime out of it. We just give to it, because we love the program and we want to help these children. They then come in, they've been doing it for 112 years. They know how to run foster care, and they've done a phenomenal job. I hope by the end of next year, we have at least homes four, five, and six. But that will depend upon our community. We have several churches and several other individual peoples who have helped so much. We have churches even right now, who have us in their monthly budget, and who, their weekly budget, as a matter of fact. And we have some churches that are going to be really helping a great deal in the very near future. But we need the help of everyone. I'm not here asking for a thing from me or for our organization, but if you're really interested in helping these foster children, look into us. Check us out. And maybe, and by the way, we do have training courses for foster parents. Our next one will be done by the Florida Baptist Children's Home, social workers, in the latter part of September. So I think that's probably more than I should say at this point. Thank you for listening, and I hope you'll check into us.
And I've been with the Y for about 12 years. I've done about 15 funerals just this year, a heroin overdose. We've been in the streets for 12 years. We go out from midnight to three. And we're in the streets 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We're feeding clothes. I really, really, my heart breaks, because there's 400 churches in this town, and this many people in this room. It's embarrassing. The church needs to get off their butts, get out of the four walls, and care for these kids. It is, it's time. The church has got to rise up. You can't just say you're a Christian, you got to stand up and start caring for these kids. And I don't care what mom and dad does, I don't care what's going on, I don't care what it is, it's all an excuse. We have got to take care of these kids. So I'm asking you, if you go to church and call yourself a Christian, to come and talk to these people and say, hey, I need the help. What do you need? Just take a child. If everybody in a church took a child, we wouldn't have any kids hurting. And these kids are struggling. I've got two kids I'm dealing with right now, everybody's strung out. Everybody's strung out in his family. Last year, he missed 140 days of school. His sister missed 70 days of school. I took Dr. Green to his house. She went to his house with me. The superintendent got out of her office and went to this house. And she said, Pastor Jerry, we got to do something. She's doing her part, they're doing our part, we've got to do our part. His name is Jesus. He's asked us to get out of the four walls and get into the streets. And the Y's been very diligent. I'm working, Carrie Moran, everybody in this room, our mama down, down the street here, what's her name? This one right here. The radio station. Michelle Skorsky, the Skorsky, everybody's doing their part, but we need everybody help. And I, I, I'm thankful for this meeting, I'm thankful for the work you're doing, and we have got, we have got to get it done. Thank you so much for being here. Thank you for caring for these kids and these families. God bless.
Thank you, Pastor Jerry.
Hi, my name is Carrie Cruz, and I am a foster parent. This is my husband, Patrick. I have two questions. The first one is in regards to when the children are placed with us. Is there any way, and I know it's difficult for you guys, to get more information on these kids when they're being placed with us? Because sometimes we don't get anything at all. And it's really scary when you get a kid placed with you and you have no information. And I can just tell you as an example for one of our children, they were born addicted to methadone, and no one told me that. So as a nurse, thank God, this baby was placed in our home, was withdrawing, and I knew enough to notice the symptoms and act on it. But had I not, I'm not sure what would happen. So for us, it's just really scary, you know, to get it and not have any information. Is there a way to put something in place that that can happen?
We will certainly take that. Is it on? Okay, so we, well, I will certainly take that back to the staff and talk to them about it. Generally speaking, most of the time, we usually know something. It's not always very much. It depends on the age of the kids. If they're old enough to talk to us and tell us, we can get a little bit more from them, obviously. Well, so can you, because they come to your house and talk to them. When they're younger, sometimes we just don't have anything. Again, with the substance issues, sometimes people aren't very nice, they don't like it when we come out, because we take their kids. Sometimes they're hiding from us. I've had staff spending three days looking for our mom, trying to find her, to talk with her about the stuff. So to the degree that we can, we really try to. I think that foster parents are entitled to a certain amount of information, so that you can have success in having the child in your home. We also have that fine line of confidentiality, that we have to be careful about that as well. But I, I hear what you're saying, and I'll be happy to take that back. But, yeah, got another question.
Can you hear me? There we go. The other thing is, as a foster parent of almost two years, is there anything in place, or is there anything that we can start to work on to get in place, to get help for us? Like, as you see, we have one, two, three, four of our six children with us, because we have no childcare. We get no help, we get no relief, and we want to do this, we want to be in it for the longevity. We want help. Is there any services, or companies, or people, or in the community, or if you don't want to foster, but you want to put your hands in it? Help us. Become a babysitter, become a light, like a backgrounded babysitter, so that we have people to call on and get help. I can go on a date with my husband, I can hang with my biological child, you know, without our foster children. Or we can go to functions like this without a corral of our kids.
The answer to your question is yes. I have a room full of about 100 people here, who are going to come sign up, because you're exactly right, it's called respite care. And these are people, you guys, you can't have a criminal history, okay? We can't let criminals be hanging with our kids, so you can't have a criminal history. Do you know how to be fingerprinted? Come on, come be fingerprinted, come hang out at some classes, learn how to do the stuff. And then, what she's talking about, it's called respite care. Did you hear her? She has a simple request, she wants to date that good-looking man over there, okay? She wants to hang out with him. She wants to spend a little time with her own child. And you know what, if we don't meet that need, do you blame her if she says, take your kids back? Do you blame her? And it's all because nobody would stand in the gap and babysit for a night? Come on, we can do better than that. You heard her plea, we're not making it up, she's the one of many that are saying the same thing. Do we really have to create an agency? Do we really have to pay people to go do this? What can we do, what that gentleman over here was talking about? Step up, say, hey, I'm expecting at least 20 or 30 of you to come see me tonight, say, Connie, I'll babysit for this lady. We can't let just anybody, like, she can't just go through the Yellow Pages and pick somebody to come babysit her four kids that we placed with her. She's not allowed to do that. She has to ask somebody that comes through the process. So again, I have a family, but I'm willing to stay tonight to take your name and information to get you signed up for a class, so this lady can have a date night with her husband. It's your challenge. I want the, I'm going to stand by the door, and I get your name and information before you leave tonight, so that we can fill this need. It's a simple, basic need. Come on, folks. What's the applause? Are you in or are you out? Are you in? Six of you? Six of you? Come on, all right, get in. That's your answer. There's about 12 or 20 here, maybe, that's going to come and babysit for you. We don't have anything, you know what, the deal is, if we have foster parents that don't already have kids in their homes, sometimes they can service the respite home. Did you all listen to Brina tonight? She said our foster homes are packed, we're paying lots of our community dollars to other counties, because we don't have it here in our county. So we certainly don't have homes that can do the respite for her. We need more. Thank you very much for sharing, and we'd be happy to fill that need. What you got, sir?
Hey, my name's Ruben.
Ruben, I'm sorry, can I just interrupt you just one second? Brina from the Safe Children's Coalition did want to address your issue, because they do have some services for you.
You need to talk to your licensing specialist, but we do pay for daycare. We have several churches within our whole entire circuit do Parents Night Out on Fridays, Wednesdays. There's several different churches throughout the whole entire circuit, where you can go and leave your children there, they're already backgrounded, they're screened. Your licensing specialist can give you all that information, and we do pay for daycare. We even cover the amount that the county doesn't cover. So talk to your licensing specialist. Thanks. Okay.
Any more questions?
My name's Ruben. Hello, hello.
Hey, so we have, we're the sibling group that has six kids. We have the two twins and four girls. We're in the homes with Bobby and Floyd. My concern that I have is, when the kids are placed with us, and we've asked, we actually had two sibling groups that went up for adoption. And in both cases, before we took placement, we said no sexual kids, no sexual behavior. The one case, they told us, when we received the call, note that there's no documentation of this. A few months later into it, we had a situation where the kid had done some behaviors to another kid. So we had to obviously get a DCF involved, or the sheriff's office to file a report. Fast forward a month later, he did it again. At that point, we're like, well, we asked you guys from the beginning, we would have never took this placement, had you guys told us this, for the sexual behavior. The point that I'm getting to all this is that, if you guys don't disclose this stuff to your families, you're really just closing the door for your own families. You're not respecting their wishes and some of these, and some of these concerns that they have. Like, we have a biological daughter. So then when the sheriff's office comes, they want to question every child in the home, for something we could have prevented in the beginning. Now I understand. There was documentation in our case. Now, hold on, now, I want to say this, that kid went on to do it to two kids in our home. He went on to expose, to the kid that, one of our friends that spent the night with him, went on to do it to another kid. So really, that chain of, it just, it just led to more events and more events, when it could have been prevented from the beginning. The documentation was there, when we asked the caseworker, it wasn't disclosed. Two months later, we had him removed, he went to a therapeutic home on his own. They went on to adoption. He went on to do the same thing. We talked to those parents. So, I guess really what I'm asking of you guys is, you really need to disclose this stuff before people get involved. You're shutting your own doors here. When this kind of stuff happens, we were shocked, we were like, we've never done this before. Now you're questioning our daughter, you're exposing her to this world that she has no idea what he's doing. So at this point, we're like, we just want to shut our house down, I mean, we don't want to be a part of this. But you're doing this to your own families, that's my point. And when you look at the whole system as a whole, it really needs to, just to be re-looked at. These kids are in care way too long. The court system is really bogged down, and I get that. Add another judge, somebody has to do something about it. You can't have these cases going on three, four, or five years. There's no point. At this point, these kids build an attachment to us, and then they want to stay with us. They don't want to hear that there's a Nance stepping up last minute to, to go with. You're just causing more hurt. But also, you don't put the services in place for these kids either. So if you're going to transition them, put some transition therapists in place. Reassure these kids that it's going to be okay. They have no idea. So I look at the system as a whole, we're failing the kids. And the foster parents, the kids that we, our first, our first group that we had in foster care, we paid for private therapy, out of pocket. It was a, through our church, obviously, and they gave us a discount. But the whole point is, it was a therapy that we needed to understand the child. Some of the therapists that come to the home, I've had to sit down with them, and I said, you need to come up with an idea on what you're going to do, because this isn't going to work. And one of the ladies, I told her, I said, just don't come back. I don't know what you're going to do, but this isn't going to work, don't come back. And some of the people that, these services that you're providing are just there to get a check. And I hate to say that, because you're really frowning on so many entities of foster care, and how, but really, we're affecting the kids. We're doing them no justice. These are the kids that are going to grow up in our community down the road. So if we're not serving them now, and with any way that we can, it's pointless. You're going to get the same turnaround down the road, with kids doing the same thing. I had, I had a nine-year-old, I'm going to run away, I'm going to do the, it's just a system of, a cycle, a vicious cycle is what I mean.
Thank you, thank you very much. We hear what you're saying, and we do understand, and we just had a little discussion about it, and we will look into that further, what you've mentioned.
One more thing on adoption, and when they're going on to adoption. I've had two cases now that I follow up, I try to keep in touch with all the kids. The lady that was speaking here earlier, those were my kids, they were in care with me, both of them. So I try to keep in touch with every kid that comes to our home, their parents, where they're at, if they need help. From what I see with the system, that you guys don't provide even services, when they go on to adoption, and I've talked to two different families, both families, the kids have been split up in their sibling groups. I've had sibling groups, two, five kids, and both of them have been split up.
We do have adoption services, and we will talk about that in a little bit. Dave is here to discuss it, so we will get back to that, okay, for you. But thank you. Alita, there's a young lady right here in a red shirt, that she's been waiting, as well as a lady in here in a purple shirt.
Hi, my name is Sally McDonald. I'm a former foster mother for teenage girls in North Carolina, mother of a grown son. I'm a former foster mother for teenage girls in North Carolina, mother of a grown son. I've served as host for a 16-year-old Spanish exchange student, and I'm currently a guardian at Lightem. As a foster parent and as a guardian, I find the workings of the system very frustrating. I don't think that it serves the needs of the children well enough. I think that often the concern seems to be more with the parents or with reunification than it is with what is actually best for that particular child. As a former foster parent, I saw a child reunited with a father who had raped her. I couldn't feel that was in her best interest, no matter how much she did love and miss her family. As a guardian at Lightem, I see a situation with a parent who has a long, long history of substance abuse, neglect and abuse of the children. And yet, the children keep going back to her, she has legal custody. And the father of one of those children, who's more than willing to care for both of the children, even though one is not his, he can't afford an attorney. And he gets, forgive my language, royally screwed by the system in the process. So I think that we need to focus more on what the kids really need.
Robin Jensen, who is our regional managing attorney, is gonna answer your question.
I can tell you, sometimes it is frustrating. I understand your concerns. Under the law, the number one priority is reunification. And we work towards, kind of like what Connie was saying, we have to work towards that. I don't know the specifics in your case as far as the father, but that's under the law what we have to do, that's our one priority. We assess, like Connie said, parents get case plans, they follow through with the services, and then we review these cases in court, six months at the most, oftentimes more often, and we bring to the court what the parents have done, how they've progressed, and that's how we proceed in the cases. I wanted to answer another question about the gentleman over there where he talked about the bogged-down system. We understand that with what's been happening in Manatee right now. We are looking at bringing in another judge, maybe a magistrate. It's very frustrating for us because the statute provides that we should be getting permanency for these kids in a year. And when we have such a bogged-down system, it impacts everything. So we are looking at some of those things. We've got meetings we've set up, we've brought in an outside foundation that look at Circuit 12 because of the number of the kids coming into care. It's a national, the Casey Foundation. So we've brought in everybody to look at some of these situations. We've got every area involved, and we're starting with that. I think I addressed everything.
Alita, right over the lady, I guess in the black shirt beside the lady in the purple
Hi, I'm a licensed clinical social worker in town, and I have a question and a comment. My question is, how many out of all the reports in Manatee County of possible child abuse or neglect, how many children are removed of all kids that are reported?
So far this year, we've removed close to 300 children. I don't have the exact number at the end of the month, but at the middle of the month, the middle of August, we had sheltered 291 children.
I'll give you percentages, some percentages for Manatee County here. So the statewide average, and this is removal rates per 1,000 children, the removal rates statewide are 3.7 to 4.0, this is two years' worth of data, 4.5 is highest and 3.7 is the lowest. Manatee County has been anywhere from 5% to 7% to 8%, 11%, 12%, 11%. So two to three times the state average every month.
So is that out of 1,000 reported children?
That's per 1,000 children. I have the 100 abuse reports too. Do you have that? Per 100 abuse reports, they're almost double the state average. Some months, they're a little bit higher. Do you have the data with you?
Brina, do you have a data for the abuse hotlines? How many calls are coming in? Maybe that's what she's asking.
For the state, Manatee County? They're getting 450 to 500 a month, right? 450 to 500 a month.
And how many children are removed?
Anywhere, the last year has been anywhere, the high was 74, 56. We're averaging about 57 children a month for the last six months. On the last year, it's about 49 per month. So 10, 11% average.
Okay, 10 or 11%.
So out of every 100 abuse reports, 10 or 11% of the children are being removed.
Okay. And my comment is backing up a little bit, well, not really backing up from what I said, but are your investigators, are the investigators well-trained in differentiating between what child is, you know, what family unit is dangerous and what is not? Because there's, you know, mild panic about our drug problem lately, and it is a huge problem, but could CPS be overreacting and could we be removing more children than we need to, partly because of the panic?
The answer to that is emphatically no. Across the state, people in our, the circuit surrounding us, the Sun Coast region, when this started like a year and a half, two years ago, people are like, "What's going on over there? You guys are sheltering too many kids." So we said, "Come, look at the cases and tell us which one we should not have sheltered." Oh, 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 yeah. And there was not, you guys, not one, not one case that people came in and looked at that they say, "You should not have sheltered that one." There was not one. They're going, "Wow, wow, you guys have bad cases over here." We have something called a peer review. That's just kind of like a quality assurance, you know, where people come in and kind of evaluate your work and that type of stuff. And when they came in and looked at our cases, they go, "We don't like coming here. You guys have too many cases, you have too many kids in your families. These cases are so complicated, these cases are so complex. This is different than the other cases that we go to." So I wholeheartedly stand here emphatically saying, "No, there's not one case where we have sheltered kids that we did not need to shelter." Not one.
I can respond to that too. From the legal perspective also, we have about a 98% to 99% rate of wins, and our appellate rate is higher than that. So courts look at every shelter, we move these cases through, legal looks at the shelter, we assess them under the law. So I can tell you, if we didn't think we could make the burden and prove our case, we wouldn't be taking these cases forward. So it's not an overreaction. I don't know who asked that, but I am not seeing any overreaction. It's a community that's in crisis.
You had a question? Alita, there was somebody over here.
Yeah, I know a gentleman had a question first.
Okay.
I'm a little bit late, so excuse me, I don't know if this was spoke about yet, but my name is Greg Cruz, and I actually was a foster child. I was taken away from my family at the age of 11. And my question is basically, I just turned 41, so even though it's 30 years, I'm 30 years removed from that, you know, a lot of those issues are still very recurring in my life, and, you know, it's just not something we forget. And I could remember feeling like, as children, like, there was something wrong with us because they were demonizing my mother for being an addict, but no one was helping her. So my question is, let's suppose once there's an overdose or something like that, and you remove the children, do you guys then, are there programs in place to actually work with the parents besides just saying, "Hey, you need to be clean if you want your kids back," and then, and that's it? And, you know, 30 days later, they get a dirty urine, so they're not eligible to get their kids back? But are there people actually helping them? Because addiction is a very, I know a lot of us don't understand it because we haven't been in that situation, but addiction is hard, I would assume, you know? And from us looking, on the outside looking in, it's easy to say, you know, "You want your kids back, get clean," but are there actually people helping and helping through the process instead of just, you know, just basically demonizing and making it a criminal thing?
Yes, and thank you for sharing your story with us. We do. And the Safe Children's Coalition, if they come into care, they have a case plan, the parents. And there is a case manager assigned to that parent and that child. And that case manager then will help the parent through that process, you know, with the services that they need. So yes, we do that. We're gonna take this one question right here, and then we are gonna move on to something else, and then if we have any more time, we'll go back to some questions.
Thank you. Good evening to you. My name is Denise Tieco. I don't want to be self-serving, I did not know this was about DCF, about foster care at all. I was at Source One looking at a job, I had been terminated from DCF as an investigator, and the woman said to me, "They are having a meeting about youths," and she knows my passion for youths, I've worked with youths since I was 18 years old, and so I came. So whatever I'm gonna say, I'll probably move out of Florida tonight. What I'm about to say, I want to respond to something immediately. We are well-trained at DCF, extremely well-trained in trauma, in understanding the root cause of things, extremely well-trained. So anybody telling that DCF workers, CPS, TPIs are not trained is not true. We're well-trained. One of the things that concerns me, and I'm sorry, I have to say this, is that we're having this meeting today about foster care. Apparently, we want more foster parents. But there are some issues that DCF has not dealt with. I have found that among us here, there are many of us here who are parents whose children were taken. I don't know how many people here were, children were taken. I'm coming from ACS in New York. And when I started ACS in 1998, we had problems trying to recruit parents, foster parents, because there was such a disconnect. It's you and them, it's the bad parent and us. And I find when we got, became the community coalations and we started working with people whose children were taken, people who are in the home, who are in the communities, who understand the problem, as an investigator, we began to work very closely with the family, the nexus, the people that are in and around. And we, before we remove a child, we were able to bring in people, cousins, extended cousins, neighbors, the shopkeeper. And we found that afterward, the people in the community, it became like theirs. It's our children because these ACS involve them. Here, when I tried that, I guess that's why it's terminated, it's not tolerated. Now, it's probably confidentiality issue, and it's a real issue to be considered. But we have got to involve the community, the aunt, the uncle, the, somebody talk about the pastor. I'm a pastor, and I'm telling you, a lot of times, DCF never gets anybody in the church involved. In New York, I got whole church to show up at court for family. It's not done here. So until we can see the community as not just the drug-addicted mom or the abusing mom, but everybody who is in that child's immediate surrounding, we won't have to have these foster care meetings because they'll come, they'll feel Johnny's mine. The shopkeeper knows Johnny. The woman who sells, everybody in the community knows Johnny. Get them involved, there is a forum, there is a way to begin to get people in the community involved, so they own it. This is our children, it's not your child who is a drug addict. No, it's our child. And until DCF can work on that issue, getting everybody in the community as a part of the community, we always have these meetings, disconnected people who are on the foster care who have never had a problem with drugs, has never had a child removed, has never recovered, you'll never really be able to understand until you have been there and done that. I was an abused child, I've been seriously abused, and I'm, I have a passion for this, and I will fight till I die for a child to be safe in your household. But it has to be a community effort. It can't be you with your top job and your salary, and you're not getting people in the community. Where are they? Where are the friends? I have a friend last week whose child died, who died from overdose. And the mother spoke to me, she said, "DCF never, ever, ever called and said, 'Do you understand what we are going through as a family?'" Just something we're going through as friends and neighbors. DCF has to get people in the community, not just the community.
Thank you for sharing that because, you know, we do want to have involvement with the community, and that's why we are here. And, you know, that, we want families involved, we want the church involved, we want neighbors involved. And, you know, we have a community champion, and she is gonna be talking about that here in a little bit. But before we get to that, we want to bring Kristin Candle up, and she's gonna talk a little bit about foster parenting, and then we're gonna have Dave Lubak come up and talk
Well, good evening. My name is Kristin Candle. I am the recruitment specialist for the Sarasota Y Safe Children Coalition, and I am just so impressed that you all are here tonight. This is amazing. I know we've heard a lot of problems. I know we've heard a lot of things that just seem like, ugh, I just want to run away from this situation. What is this? What is this foster care thing? Well, I'm gonna encourage you right now to stay engaged, stay involved, because we can make a difference to even that one child. You heard Patty Lawler up here speak about that one teenager she made a difference to? That could be you too. I know we have problems, we'll always have problems, but there is something you can do. And so I'd like to talk to you for a few minutes about being a foster parent, and I think the best way that I can do that is to dispel some myths for you. I have people ask me all day, "I didn't think I could be a foster parent. Can I be a foster parent if I'm single?" Yes, you can be a foster parent if you're single. "I don't have a home, I don't have a lot of money, I rent a place, I work." Can I be a foster parent? Yes, you can rent a house. Yes, you can work full-time. You can be a foster parent. You don't have to be married, you don't have to be young. You do have to be over 21, but like Patty was up here, she's retired, so she can be a foster parent too. So if this is at all interesting to you, something you think that maybe you'd just like to learn more about, there's no pressure. There's no pressure to get involved in something that's more than you want to take on. Just start that journey towards learning about foster parenting. And the first way to do that is to come over to my table afterwards. I've got a flyer with a meeting that's occurring tomorrow night. We're having a foster parent information meeting tomorrow evening at our Sarasota office, not way down in Sarasota, just across the border. So it's just right by the airport area. I would love for you to come, learn about foster parenting, learn about the truth of what it really, really is. If you are an engaged person and you want to learn more, I can definitely help you. So definitely come over and see us after. Appreciate it, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dave Lubak. I'm the director of programs with the Safe Children Coalition, so I oversee our adoptions, our independent living program, and then I also oversee our Family Finders program. So I kind of got probably the best job at the coalition because I get to do adoptions. Basically, I help children find their forever family. Last fiscal year, we had approximately 126 adoptions that we finalized within our three-county project. Currently, right now, I have 50 kids that are available for adoption that do not have an adoptive family identified. So while we did do a lot of adoptions last year, we still have a huge need for adoptive families. I've got a lot of kids out there, you can see them, they're on the Hart Gallery. You can go to our website, our website has a link to the Hart Gallery, you can get a little bit of information in regards to our children. Right now, with the 50 kids that I have available for adoption that don't have an identified home, there's approximately 35 of those that are between the ages of 12 and 16. With adoption, everybody wants the cute little baby, but that's not what I have for, that are available for adoption. I've got that older teen that's lingering in care. I've got that 13-year-old that's been in care for three to four years that can't find that forever home. that forever home. So I need special people. Adoption, it does take special people. It is about people that are trauma-informed care, that know where these kids are coming from. These aren't normal kids. They're not coming from a normal background or a normal childhood experience. These kids have experienced severe trauma in their lives, so their brains operate differently than ours. So it's important for, not only for us to be involved with you guys, but it's important for you guys to be involved with us, to be engaged, to learn a little bit more about our system. You can go to our website. Our website's safecoldencoalition.org. Um, we have informational meetings on a regular basis. We have, um, our adoption parent training class on a regular basis. All that information's available on our website. So please, I encourage you guys to come out, learn a bit, a little bit about us, find out more information, find out how you can get involved. Um, I also want to talk in regards to the, just our need for foster homes. If you just take five minutes out of your night tonight, go over, talk with Jill, talk with Kristin, find out what it takes. I know that we've got special people out here that can make a difference in the lives of our children. So please, take a little bit of time out of evening tonight, go and talk with Jill and Kristin. Um, I want to talk a little bit, I think there was a gentleman that had a question about post-adopt services. The state's making a huge push in regards to the post-adoption services, especially in regards to adoption competency training. Um, again, that, a lot of that goes back to that trauma-informed care and understanding trauma, understanding where our kids are coming from. So there's a huge push to rework the whole curriculum for, across the state for adoption train competency. So we've got therapists in all the communities through the state of Florida that are, been trained with this certain, uh, skill set and tools. And so you can find that at the department's website. They've got an entire list of providers that are trained in that. Um, we're also making a big push. I know locally, we've changed our curriculum for our adoptive parents to focus and to follow the adoption competent training. We want to be sure that our families have the tools that they need to work with to successfully have that child adopted in their home and to be sure that that child and that family doesn't come back into care. In regards to the passionate former DCF, we do have a Family Finders program. Um, I oversee that program. Our entire focus in Family Finders is in regards to locating families, locating relatives. There was a recent federal change. The feds changed it so you have to notify family members and relatives within 30 days of the removal. So if there's a shelter, then you've got to notify that family. So Connie's folks are responsible for that. My folks are responsible for that. I've got approximate, I've got three workers that work for me. That's all they do all day long. They search for families. They try to let them know that, hey, there's a kid out here. And it does take more than just us. We can't do it alone. We need you guys because you saw the numbers that were up on the screen there? It's a sinking ship. We need your help. We need you guys to get involved and to stay active with us. Other than that, I think that's it. Oh, go ahead. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. There are advantages in regards to if you adopt from foster care. If you adopt from foster care, the Medicaid follows the, that youth until the age of 18. Um, we stay involved with you all the way till 18. The way I look at it, it's a team effort. That's the way it needs to work. It needs to be a community, like you said. It has to be a team effort. Our caseworkers, we train our caseworkers to be about the family, family engagement. Be a partner with the family. We train our foster parents that way. Our foster parents, we, it's not, I mean, I've been doing this 16 years. In the past, yeah, it was kind of like you, as a caseworker, you were focused on the child. It's not like that anymore. There was a huge shift where we realized, we've got to engage these parents, we've got to work one-on-one with the parents, we've got to try to get these parents the services they need so we can reunify these children with their, with their parents. So with adoption though, to go back to your question, um, the Medicaid will follow the child to the age of 18. They get a tuition waiver so they can go to any state institution or public school or college. And they can get the free college tuition, they don't have to pay for that. Uh, you also get the adoption subsidy. According to state statutes, 417. So if you adopt, you will get 417 for adoption subsidy. And it's case by case because you can, depending on a child's needs, that amount can be higher. It just kind of, it's case by case basis. But the standard is the 417. But as, I've been doing this two years now, the adoptions, and the way I look at it is that we created that family. So we put that family together. So we're in it for the long haul, the same way that you're in it for the long haul. So whenever you adopt an added benefit, you can always pick up that phone and call us because we're in this with you. I don't want to see, the most traumatic thing is one, for a kid to be removed from a parent. So that kid's already got that trauma. Then on top of that, they get adopted, things fall apart and that kid comes back into care. That's just absolutely heartbreaking. And so we are totally vested in being sure that if things are going south or you're having difficulty after we've adopted and our case closed out, pick up the phone and call us because we are in this together. It has to be a team effort. If it's not a team effort, if it's not a community, then it's, it's just not going to happen. So, any other questions in regards to adoption?
Hello, how y'all doing tonight? All right. Uh, my name is Wayne Washington and, um, I got a question. We did a vigil for Janaya Thomas. How many of y'all heard of Janaya?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, um, I had a, um, a question regarding that. Um, with that situation, are there anything set in place for, um, so that won't happen again or?
Um, we will discuss any of that after this meeting. So if you stick around, because this is specifically about the out-of-home care.
Okay.
But we will discuss that, so just stick around after this meeting's over, okay?
All right, thanks ma'am.
Thank you. Okay. Um, one last thing, um, before we close for the evening. We do want the community involved. We want family members involved. We want the church involved. And the Sarasota YMCA is leading the state with children between kinship care and non-relative caregivers. So 59% approximately of the children that come into our system are with kinship care. So it's, you know, we do want the help of the community. And we do have a community champion here to help us bring this to light. So Ms. Xavier Bailey, um, would you like to come up and say a few words?
Good evening. Good evening. How many agencies do we have in here by the, raise, if you just raise your hand for me? Agencies, anybody who works with children? Raise your hand if you work with children already. So everybody look around, keep your hands up. Everybody look around about, now put your hands down. Who just came out to get information? Or if you're a foster parent, or if you adopted a child? And this is what we're trying to do and, and we're welcoming more people. And, um, in my community, we try not to make sure that our kids are taken and put into the foster care. And I can say for myself, I was a homeless child. Um, my stepdad did cocaine, I smelled it at nine years old. So my mother had the sense to remove me and kick him out, but that's something that he had to deal with. We have so many children in Manatee County. If you guys are not understanding what we're saying, we are leading in removals. Like the lady said back there, if you all, the community, whether you're working with kids every day, or whether you're in the Boys and Girls Club or in the YMCA, whatever it is, whatever you're doing, we need you as a community. One of the things that was brought to my attention was that we don't have a lot of black foster parents. And I invited some people out because there's a shortage. And this kind of goes in the circle. When these kids are getting removed from their homes, they still have to go to school, right? And these kids are going to school thinking about that they've been removed from their home. So we need, I don't know exactly if we have a program or something right now where it actually follows our children into the schools. Because a lot of these kids that become homeless were foster kids because they end up aging out of the system. Like the foster mom said earlier, don't be afraid of having an older child because these kids need homes also. And I went through some of these pictures and I tried to put all of them in my home if I could, but my husband said, no, we only have room for two. But if you can't, this is the time to get on board. We're trying to, it's, it's the decision-making process. We want to eliminate the negative. What can we do to solve this problem as a community? Because like someone said earlier, it's not my child, it's not your child, it's our child. It's our children. These are the kids that are going to come back to our community. These are the kids that want to work and be successful. But unfortunately, they had some issues where their parents had to get taken away. Like you said, young man in the back, yes, some of these parents do need help. But in the meantime, it's our priority to help those children first. That's who we want to help. So they can hopefully get back to their parents if their parents are able to get them back. But in the meantime, we need foster homes. And you all are doing a great job right here, Mr. Price. And I heard about what you all are doing and that's absolutely great. But we need more foster homes. We also need people to be adopted. Right now, the minority men, which are leading, they're not graduating right now. And these minority young men are not, they don't have anywhere to stay. They're not getting adopted. Am I wrong? They're not getting adopted. But also, we're the number one removal for the heroin epidemic. And I know you said, no, they're not taking children out of their home just because they want to take them out. We're taking them out because it's an issue. But every child, it doesn't matter if their child, if their parent is an alcoholic, it doesn't matter if they saw their parents snort cocaine, every child wants to return back home. And if any of you have been working with children, they'll tell you, I want to go back home. So we need you as the community, no matter where you stay, no matter where, who you deal with or who you talk to, what church you go to, or, or whatever it can be, we need you to step up. If you're available to keep a child in your home for a month, two months, three months, two weeks, whatever it is, we need you to step up. This is the challenge. She gave you the challenge, I'm ending with the challenge. We challenge everyone who thought it not robbery tonight to come out here and listen and discuss and give your opinion and give your input. We challenge you tonight to stand up for our kids in our community because they need us. I have two kids of my own, but I want to adopt or foster, whatever I can do because I saw with my own eyes that this is a problem. This is a problem. Centerstone, stand up for me back there. I'm not trying to put you on the spot. But can you come up here really quick for me and tell them, you know? She went to Washington to tell them all about the drug problems that we have right here in Little Manatee County. Little Manatee County. We need your help. Just give them a little bit of information because I know you know those numbers.
Sure. Sadly, uh, Manatee County, where I, I grew up, you know, I'm a, a member of this community. I've been here since I was three years old, so I consider myself a native. I care about this county, this community, the people in it. They're all people that I've touched or they've touched me in some way. I have some connection to them. I've been at Centerstone, formerly Manatee Glens, for 23 years. And I think my hair gave me away. It's very white and it's very large. So I couldn't really hide, but I never really try. Anyway, what I've been talking a lot about for especially the last 18 months is the heroin epidemic here in Manatee County. We're a county of around 360,000 people. And in this July alone, we really thought last July was going to be the worst that we saw and, but this July was much worse with the over 400 doses of Narcan. That's 450 times that someone died or could have died from using the heroin that's not really heroin, it's probably fentanyl or carfentanil now. This is a drug that people use to put animals down, to make it so that, of course, they don't attack people. The human body can't withstand that. And it, for any of you who don't know what it's like, when people OD, they stop breathing. The Narcan, what it does is it enables them to breathe again. So here, you have a person that's probably blue, not breathing, not responsive. You give them the Narcan and they pop out of it like that and say, hey, what's going on? Sometimes they're angry. The problem is that addiction is a disease. That's what I've been talking about. It's a disease like diabetes that requires behavior change and lots of times medication. Medication is one of the things that can help. And if we don't do something about this and we keep, we need to work on prevention, we need to work on treatment, and it takes funding, and I know people get tired of hearing that, but that's the reality of it. It takes funding from a federal level, a state level and a local level to get these services to the people who need them. If we don't do something about it, we're going to end up like some of the other towns in our nation that have it even worse. There's a small town in West Virginia called Charleston that had over 100 overdoses in a three-day period. They only have 34,000 people in their town. So while we keep thinking that maybe we've seen the worst, we haven't, and it's impacting everything. It's impacting EMS's ability to respond to people who are having a heart attack or to car accidents because they're having to respond to overdoses. It's impacting our law enforcement, spending so many resources trying to track down the drugs or even responding to the overdoses that they can't necessarily respond to a burglary in progress or some other thing that's going on. So what you need to realize is that whether it's touched you directly in any way, it's touching you every single day if you live in this community. And so everything that they said here today is true and it's much bigger than just child welfare. I used to actually work in child welfare as part of Centerstone and I know how hard that job is and it's a job that, I don't know if I would ever do it again because sometimes I feel like there's no way out. I feel that way about addiction sometimes, but I'm feeling actually more and more optimistic. I feel optimistic when I see the people that come to these meetings. I feel more optimistic when I hear people talk about it on TV or the radio because that tells me that the message is getting out there. And I just noticed that Extavia called me up here and now she left. I think she planned that. Anyway, tell your friends, get involved however you can. If you can't foster, or you can't do respite, or you can't adopt, there are other ways to get involved. You can be a big brother, big sister. You can volunteer at the Boys and Girls Clubs. You, you can do all kinds of things in this community to try to help the problem that we're facing. You can do prevention in the schools. Prevention of addiction, if you never use a drug, you cannot become addicted to it. It's physically impossible. So we need everybody's help. And if you love this community like I do, please ask. We're all here, lots of people in the system. Find ways to help, small ways, every single way counts. Thanks.
Thank you, Melissa. Appreciate that. Um, we'd like to thank you all for coming to talk about this. We appreciate your feedback and we will, um, definitely have a discussion with, about everything that you said and take a look at it and, um, see where we can go from here. But thank you.